Good evening and welcome to this Fall Town Meeting Preview for 2021. I'm Steve Truffletti, Plymouth Town Moderator. I'm joined here in studio with Assistant Town Moderator Nicole Manfredi and with Julie Thompson, who is the Executive Director for PAC TV. And tonight she is serving also as the Floor Director in studio. The purpose of this preview is to provide town meeting members and the public with information regarding who you might be able to contact prior to town meeting to get materials or answers to questions, and also information regarding the motions to come before town meeting. Now, this is being presented live on Thursday, October 7th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. We'll also have replays on Comcast Channel 15, Verizon Channel 47, beginning this weekend, Saturday, October 9th, Sunday, October 10th at 4 o'clock, Sunday, October 10th at 9:00 a.m. Also, early this week, we had Presentation Night, and there will be replays on Saturday, October 9th at 8:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. And Sunday, October 10th at 12:00 p.m. And then finally, on the holiday, on Monday, October 11th, there will be replays at 8:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m., 4:30 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. for Presentation Night, as well as a replay at 9:30 p.m. for the Town Meeting Preview. They're also available online at PAC TV Video Share Channel and on YouTube with the playlist Plymouth Town Meeting, October 2021. And finally, Presentation Night and the Town Meeting Preview are available as video on demand at PACTV.org/VOD. Today, town meeting members were emailed copies of the Written Motion Handbook. For those town meeting members and members of the public who may not have received it, you can go to the Town of Plymouth website for Town Meeting, and they are also online on the website. At this time, I'd like to welcome back Assistant Town Moderator Nicole Manfredi, and she will give her opening comments. Welcome back, Nicole.
Thank you. I would like to thank members for your virtual participation once again. Participation and voting procedures remain unchanged. All new members have been trained. If at any time you need immediate technical support, the Help Desk number is 774-773-6111. I will also put that in the chat. The Help Desk will be fully manned this evening and throughout the day on the 16th. For questions and concerns, please contact me through the Zoom chat. Once again, I've made arrangements for any town meeting members needing technology support to participate from the library at Plymouth North High School on October 16th. There will be a group of Plymouth High School students serving as tech buddies. As of now, only two members have confirmed their participation from Plymouth North High School. If you would like to be added to this list, please notify me as soon as possible. For remaining members, if at any time you experience bandwidth issues during town meeting, you may travel to Plymouth North High School and participate from that location. A few reminders: As we take practice votes this evening, please wait to vote until indicated to do so. In addition, don't wait until the last few seconds of the countdown. Following this protocol should minimize issues regarding missing votes. And finally, throughout this evening and town meeting, please be sure to monitor the chat for important information and communication. You may use this to communicate with me throughout the entire meeting.
Thank you, and that's Nicole Manfredi, and she is the Assistant Town Manager. She'll be the Assistant Town Moderator. Sorry, Melissa and Marlene. It's been a long week. And she'll be with me tonight and also Saturday, Town Meeting. Thank goodness, we'll have some support. Also tonight, we have OTI Technologies supporting us with the V Voter Platform. And tonight, we have Kristy Kenny with us once again, and she's available to help with people that may need help with the V Voter Platform. And now, we're going to go right into the motions. On Monday night, we did talk about the procedural motions at the start of Town Meeting. I would welcome any procedural motions that any town meeting member should wish to make at the start of Town Meeting or during Town Meeting. I've already received a motion to amend, one of the main motions, and we'll take that up when we come to that article. But in the beginning, there will be two procedural motions. And once again, we will take them up. We're not going to be voting them, rather, I'm going to take attendance shortly, but take a few more minutes with these procedural motions. And the first one is, Mr. Canty, who is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, moves that all business in all sessions of this Fall Town Meeting be commenced and conducted remotely by means of the Zoom webinar and OTI virtual voting platforms. Now, we have panelists with us this evening who are available to help us answer questions, and Mr. Canty is with us to explain the vote of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Canty, Chair of Plymouth's Advisory and Finance Committee. So as everyone is well aware by now, we are still in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic. And although things are in many ways better than they were a year ago, we are still not out of the woods yet, and there is still a risk of community transmission, and there is still a risk of death even for folks that are vaccinated presently. And so at this point, there are a lot of uncertainties as to if there were going to be a physical town meeting. Hopefully, we will be able to have a physical town meeting in the not-too-distant future, but the time is not right presently. We know from prior experience since the start of the pandemic that a virtual town meeting, however, can be a tremendous success. So it makes the most sense, in my opinion, for us to continue conducting our business virtually for the time being and waiting until the situation on the ground is better before we move back to a physical version of Town Meeting, which I'm certain everyone is looking forward to very much.
Thank you, and Kevin Canty is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. And for those of you that may wish to look at the Enabling Legislation, it has been extended from last year. This year, it is Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Throughout this preview, we'll be providing you with information as to resources that may be available in connection with the various motions. The next procedural motion to come before us at Town Meeting would be that Mr. Canty moves that adjourned sessions of this Town Meeting be held remotely on October 18th at 6:00 p.m. And again, we will vote this at the start of Town Meeting in order that we have plan in advance should Town Meeting not dissolve on Saturday, October 16th. And at this time, we're not going to vote on either of those motions because we did that on Monday, but we are going to take attendance. So for everybody who is participating as a Town Meeting member, if you can now also toggle over to your V Voter Platform, and we're going to look on the screen as we did Monday night. There'll be an indication when we have 30 seconds and when people can register their presence. It now is shown, and when the clock begins, you can start to vote now. So Town Meeting members are now entering whether or not they are here. It's a roll call vote, and they can vote as to whether they're present. And after we complete this time in the next 10 seconds, we'll go through the precincts. We'll see who is indicated that they are present here this evening. We are ticking down. This will be throughout Town Meeting. This is now ended. We're now going to show on the screen, and so far, 28 members have indicated that they're present. It's shown in blue on the precincts. We're going to begin with precincts 1, 2, and 3 and scroll through all 15. This is an opportunity for the public to determine whether or not their Town Meeting members are present. 4, 5, and 6 are now shown. Also, when they vote, they can see how Town Meeting members vote. Precincts 7, 8, and 9, it's also an opportunity for Town Meeting members to see if their vote was registered properly. So if there are any Town Meeting members currently with us and they do not see the P in blue checked off, they can contact us, and we can try to work through why that didn't register. Again, we're showing precincts 10, 11, and 12, and we're going to move along to the remaining precincts, 13, 14, and 15. So all 15 precincts are shown, and as we move through the preview, we'll once again have a motion to adjourn. We're now going to begin with Article 1A. And Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the Personnel Bylaws in accordance with a memorandum of an agreement dated August 26, 2021, is located on pages 37 to 38 in the Fall Town Meeting Report and Recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. That book is gold cover. It's provided to Town Meeting members. It's available online. It's a majority vote, a roll call vote. Mr. Canty?
In a vote of 12 to 0 with one abstention, Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 1A. Approval of this article will adopt the Personnel Bylaw changes as outlined in the included memorandum.
Thank you. And for further information or answers to questions at Town Meeting, we'll be hearing from Melissa Origi. She is our Town Manager. She is also with us tonight as a panelist. Tonight, we will not be deliberating or debating motions. We will, however, entertain any questions for further information. We're going to go to Article 1B, where Mr. Canty moves that the town vote to amend the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement in accordance with the memorandum again in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. It's a majority vote and a roll call, which all of the votes will be at this Town Meeting. Mr. Canty?
In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 1B. Approval of this article will adopt the negotiated memorandum of agreement for this employee bargaining.
I would like to let Town Meeting members know that I did receive a motion to amend the main motion. However, the motion to amend had the effect of renegotiating the collective bargaining agreement. So I denied that motion because it's outside the scope of Town Meeting authority. Town Meeting has the authority to be able to decide whether to fund this or not, but not to negotiate or renegotiate the actual collective bargaining agreement. Therefore, debate, if any, on Town Meeting floor will be limited as to whether to fund or not and not get into the specifics of the terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Edward Bradley is our Fire Chief. He's available to answer questions. Marlene McCollum is our Assistant Town Manager. She'll also be available, and people can contact me in advance if they want to be on a speakers list. And I've already received such a request from one Town Meeting member. Certainly, at Town Meeting, Town Meeting members can also indicate their interest in speaking by going to the V Voter Platform and checking on the Speaker button, and they will be recognized in the order in which they've requested to speak. But also, I keep in mind that I will give speaking priority to people who have not yet spoken. So it's to try to be fair to everybody and to be as inclusive as possible. And now, we're going to move on to B1, and we have a number of motions. First, Motion 1 for Subcommittee Report, B1. And Mr. Canty, I understand you're going to be commenting on a number of the motions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So although you will be taking a number of votes as Town Meeting members on Article 2A, my comments will relate to the entirety of Article 2A because that is how the Advisory and Finance Committee voted on Article 2A. So with that in mind, in a vote of 10 to 0 with one abstention, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 2A. Approval of this article will increase the fiscal year 2022 general fund operating budget by $2,9285 as detailed in the materials.
Thank you. Kevin Canty is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and as he correctly stated, there are multiple motions that will be voting under this article. The first will be Motion 1, Subcommittee Report, B1. Lynn Barrett is the Director of Finance. She's here tonight as a panelist. She'll be available before and at Town Meeting. And Town Meeting members have the text of the motion under Subcommittee Report, B1. It's a majority and a roll call. There'll be Motion Number 2 under Subcommittee Report, B1, and that's a 2/3 vote. It has to do with transferring from the stabilization fund. So we've separated that out. And then finally, Motion 3 under Subcommittee Report, B1, has to do with, again, the Nuclear Mitigation Stabilization Fund. Lynn Barrett would be available to answer questions, and I do have a motion to amend. The motion to amend is from Dawn Williams. Dawn Williams is Precinct 8. He's a Town Meeting member, and he moves to substitute for the Nuclear Mitigation Stabilization Fund the following funding source, and that'd be free cash. At this time, I'm going to ask whether or not Dawn Williams is logged in as a Town Meeting member tonight, and if he is, we can ask Mr. Williams if he wishes to be heard. 8, Precinct 8. So again, this is a motion to amend, and it is a majority vote on the motion to amend even though the main motion is a 2/3 vote. So you can amend. And...
He's coming.
I believe Dawn Williams is coming. So Dawn Williams is a Town Meeting member, and Dawn, we'd like to welcome you. And if you'd like to mention the reason for your motion to amend, good evening.
Good evening. Yes, I would. Can you hear me?
We could...
Okay, all right. The Precinct 8 had a caucus last week, and we were concerned that the mitigation fund was being used for budgetary matters, which it's entitled to do, but it was being used very much earlier than we had hoped because we don't really know what's shaking out with this whole tech situation. We haven't had a whole lot of support from the whole tech in terms of mitigating things like the waste that's being stored. And whereas we realized that this money is intended to be used as supplementary to budgets, we felt that it was very premature that this happened this early in the process when there were so many unknowns going on with whole tech. So we thought that it would be better to keep that money in abeyance because we don't know what we're facing in terms of expenses, both long and short term. And we felt that at this time, with too many answers outstanding, it was better to be more cautious.
Thank you. That's Donald Williams, Precinct 8. A couple of things. We're going to go back to Subcommittee Report A after we finish this particular item. And at this time, I'm going to call on Lynn Barrett, and she is the Director of Finance, and she's here as a panelist. Welcome, Lynn Barrett.
Good evening. So we have recommended use of the Nuclear Mitigation Fund due to the fact that whole tech's tax payment is basically going to be decreased in half. So a reduction of about $3.2 million or so, we thought was significant enough to recommend use of the Nuclear Mitigation Fund to help offset the increase in the tax rate. So that's really what the recommendation was for, and it's for the overall budget. It's not for specific line items or new positions or anything like that. It's really just to offset the effect of the whole tech tax payment reducing.
Lynn Barrett's the Director of Finance. She'll be available before Town Meeting and at Town Meeting. We did get a request from a Town Meeting member, which I'll pass on to Mr. Canty. Kevin Canty, Town Meeting member, requests whether the dollar amounts in each article can be included in the summary from the Finance Committee. I'll leave that to you as to whether or not that's something that you want to incorporate into your presentation. I did indicate that we were on Motion 3 of Subcommittee Report, B1. Before we go on to Subcommittee Report, B2, we're going to go to Motion on Subcommittee Report, A. And the Motion on Subcommittee Report, A, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the votes taken at the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting under Article 7A, Subcommittee Report, A, by increasing the original appropriation by $5,030 for the purposes as listed in the provided articles, 2A and 2B, Fiscal 22 Budget Amendments Report. It's a majority vote, and there'll all be roll call. Mr. Canty, anything you'd like to add?
No, my prior comments on 2A covered this, but thank you.
Thank you. And again, on the panel tonight, Melissa Origi and Lynn Barrett are available to answer questions. And at Town Meeting, Town Clerk Pearl Sears would also be available to answer questions. At this time, we're going to go on to the Motion under Subcommittee Report, B2. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the funding sources provided by the votes taken at the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting by decreasing the original amount of $1,034,000 transferred from the Pavement Management Stabilization Fund by $185,203 for a total transfer of $848,797. Again, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, would be available. At this time, we're going to bring in from Precinct 4, Michael Babini. Michael Babini would like to speak, to ask a question regarding these matters under Article 2A. Michael Babini, welcome to this Town Meeting Preview coming to you live on October 7th. We began at 6:00 p.m. We are at PAC TV Studio, and also Town Meeting members are zooming in on the Zoom video conferencing platform. Town Meeting members are able to indicate if they wish to speak by using the V Voter Platform provided by OTI Technology. And Michael Babini, when you're in, you can speak. And there he is. He's showing the screen. Good evening. Mike Babini.
I had a question on the whole tech, the $2 million. If that money is not taken out of the stabilization fund, how would that affect the tax rate, that $2 million amount?
Michael Babini asks about the effect of the tax rate. We're going to go back to Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance.
The motion to amend is to take it out of free cash so there would not be any effect on the tax rate. If both of those got voted down theoretically, then it would increase the tax rate, and it would increase it by about 19 cents. It would increase the tax rate about 19, 20 cents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to go to Precinct...
$1,000.
Thank you. Precinct 12, Betsy Hall. Again, tonight, we're not going to be debating and deliberating, but we will be asking questions as Town Meeting members seek to become prepared for Town Meeting. And we're bringing in Betsy Hall as a Town Meeting member who is going to speak tonight at this Town Meeting Preview. It's coming to you live, October 7th. There she is. She's showing on the screen, and we will unmute her so that she can speak and ask her question. This is Precinct 12, Betsy Hall. Betsy, we can see you on the screen if you're able to unmute and join us so that we can hear you. This is coming to you live from PAC TV on October 7th. Town Meeting members are joining us by a Zoom platform.
This is Betsy Hall.
Good evening, Betsy.
Hi. Yes, could Lynn translate, please, translate that 19 cents into the homeowner, the average homeowner, if neither the Nuclear Mitigation Stabilization Fund or free cash was used? Lynn said 19 cents, but how would that affect the average taxpayer?
Thank you. Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, question from Betsy Hall.
So the average taxpayer, based on the 2021 values of the town, is a $389,000 home. So based on that, that homeowner would... The effect on the homeowner would be about $74.
$74? Thank you. And the second question I have is, what will be happening next year with whole tech? Will it be an even greater deficit next year than this year? In other words, will their value go down?
Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance.
Yeah, so each year, we'll have an appraiser look at that property and value. You know, value its contents. There's a certain value towards the nuclear gas. There's a certain value towards the buildings. But as they reduce their footprint and everything comes down, that value will continue to drop. So it's just sort of every year, we sort of have to look at it. As of June 30th, what activity has happened on that property? And a new value, a new bill would be generated based on that value. So it's really hard to tell right now exactly how much that would be.
Sure, but thank you very much. I do have one additional question. How much is the average taxpayer's tax going to go up if the Nuclear Mitigation Fund or free cash is used for this year's, this budget that we're looking at right now? So how much is the average taxpayer's going to go up anyway?
So if you... We sent out a supplement, the yellow supplement 1. That supplement includes that sources and uses chart. And on page 4 of that supplement, the estimate of the tax rate based on current year's values. So we are going to have new valuations, but if value stayed the same, the tax rate would be going up approximately 31 cents based on this budget. So from a tax rate of 1616 to a tax rate of 1647. So 31 cents for that average homeowner would be 31 times 389. That's $120, but $120.
Okay, thank you so much.
And moving on, just want to remind Town Meeting members, we do not share credentials for participation at Town Meeting. And if anyone has done that tonight, it's not a major problem, except we have a few members whose names are displaying twice. It may be that credentials are shared. It could be they have multiple devices. But on the day of Town Meeting, if you could have one device and not share your credentials. There was also a request to include page numbers when addressing an article. I could tell you that we have, in some of the motions, page numbers are referenced in the motion in the report. In others, you can go to the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. We're moving on to Subcommittee Report, C. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the votes taken in the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting under Article 7A, Subcommittee Report, C, by increasing the amount appropriated for the Fire Department, all other expenses, line number 33, by $19,930. If Town Meeting members have questions or need more information prior to Town Meeting, you can contact the Fire Chief, Edward Bradley, who would be available, also made a presentation on Presentation Night. Moving to Subcommittee Report, D. Mr. Canty moves that the town vote to amend the votes taken at the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting under Article 7A, Subcommittee Report, D, by increasing the amount appropriated for the Department of Public Works. Again, line 40. And that could be handled by the Director of the Department of Public Works, Jonathan Beeter, if there were questions on that particular motion. Moving on to... Moving on to Subcommittee Report F. Mr. Canty moves to amend the votes taken at the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting under Article 7A Subcommittee Report F, which has to do with the Plymouth Public Schools. And questions could be answered by the school business manager, who is Brad Crothers. Also, we have, from the Plymouth Public Schools, joining us at town meeting will be Superintendent Christopher Campbell. Moving on, after the Subcommittee Report F, under Article 2B, we have Subcommittee Report G1. And Mr. Canty moves town, the votes taken at the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting under Article 7B, be decreased the amount appropriated for the water budget, Water Enterprises Debt Line Number 69. And questions could be answered by Lynn Barrett. All of these, majority vote, roll call vote. For Subcommittee Report G2, the sewer budget, we have a motion from Mr. Canty to amend the votes taken on the 2021 Spring Annual Town Meeting. Again, Lynn Barrett, the Director of Finance, to answer questions. And finally, Subcommittee Report G3 has to do with the airport budget. And on that motion to amend the votes in 2021, we'll have Thomas Marr. He is the airport manager. All of these, majority and a roll call vote. And at this time, we're going to move on to Article 3. Mr. Canty moves the town appropriate the sum of $21,558 by transferring $5,132.37 from the Community Preservation Act undesignated fund balance, and by transferring $16,417.71 from free cash to pay certain unpaid bills. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 3. Approval of this article will authorize the Finance Department to process the outstanding invoices from fiscal year 21 as detailed in the included table.
Thank you, Kevin Canty. And at this time, this particular one is a 4/5 vote. So we'll need 4/5 to town meeting. Lynn Barrett, the Director of Finance, available to answer questions. Also, Marie Brinkman, who is the Human Resources Director, is also available. And at this time, Article 4. We're going to begin, we're going to have two sets of motions. First, for items A1 to A11, we have a motion for Mr. Canty. And you'll see, we also have a chart here that shows the various items, A1 to A11. These are a majority and a roll call vote. For the quantum of vote, Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 14 to 0 with no abstentions, Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 4, items A1 through A11. Capital appropriations as listed in the included chart as referenced by the moderator.
Thank you, Kevin Canty. And Dawn Williams, Precinct 8. Once again, if we can have him come in, he wants to speak in connection with this town meeting preview. Again, welcome back, Dawn Williams. And he's here. I can see him on the screen.
Thank you very much. I have a general question. How close are we to the levy limit?
This question is to Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, as to how close we are to the levy limit.
So Dawn, if you look at that supplement, number 1, again, that I referenced earlier, the, on page 4, at the top, on the sources and uses, in the property tax section, the unused levy capacity is identified. And based on this budget that we're recommending, the excess levy capacity would be about 9.2 million. So that's the amount that we're under our levy limit by 9.2.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. And we're continuing on. Under Article 4, we have a 4B item, which is the Brook Road Bridge Design and Construction. Mr. Canty.
In a vote of 12 to 1 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 4B1, which is the capital appropriation for the Brook Road Bridge Design and Construction project.
Thank you. Kevin Canty is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. This is a 2/3 vote for town meeting to pass. Jonathan Beeter is the Director of Department of Public Works. He'll be available to answer questions. Also, Sheila Scarsi, Town Engineer. And today, I received a request from a town meeting member regarding the possibility of making a motion for a constituent. The constituent wanted to delay action until a future town meeting. And the question was whether or not there was a motion that could be made to postpone or delay it. I ruled it out of order, and I would explain to town meeting and the constituent that the proper procedure would be at town meeting. If someone wishes to postpone or delay to another town meeting, then you would argue during the debate that you wish to have town meeting vote against the main motion. And if the main motion failed, then it could come up at a future town meeting, provided that it was on the warrant and it was moved by a motion. But a town meeting cannot just vote to postpone to another town meeting and bind a future town meeting. Moving on, in the warrant, we have Article 5, in which Mr. Canty moves the town appropriates the sum of $9,200,000. Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 5. Approval of this article will allow for the extensive renovations needed at the West Plymouth Fire Station on Sanus Head Street. Existing living quarters there are uninhabitable, and the firefighters are utilizing temporary trailers due to the discovery of asbestos and other harmful carcinogens in the aging station.
Thank you. And again, this is a 2/3 vote. And Fire Chief Edward Bradley is available, along with Assistant Town Manager Marlene McCollum, to answer questions. Article 6 has been withdrawn, so we move to Article 7. And Mr. Canty moves the town appropriate the sum of $10,000 to pay costs associated with conducting an eDNA study. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 7. This eDNA study will establish a pre-construction data line of aquatic organisms within the Town Brook watershed before the dam repairs and fish bypass channel are constructed, and provide valuable data on the ecological impacts of the project.
Thank you. And David Gould is available to answer questions. We're now going to go to Precinct 2. And we're going to bring in town meeting member Richard Cirque, who's asked to speak at this town meeting preview. And again, town meeting members who are participating live on October 7 have the ability to use the V-Voter platform to indicate any interest in speaking, to ask questions of our panel. This is coming to you live on October 7. We began at 6:00 PM. It will be also replayed. We're now bringing in Richard Cirque from Precinct 2. We have a number of town meeting members who are participating this evening. And at the end of this preview, we will have another opportunity with a motion to adjourn to see that your town meeting members are participating in the town meeting preview. Again, if we can bring in Richard Cirque. He's participating in both the V-Voter platform as well as the Zoom. And there's Mr. Cirque now showing on the screen. He's currently, and he's unmuted. Good evening, Mr. Cirque.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My question actually pertained to Article 5, if you don't mind going back to that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I wanted to know what the status is of the position that we used to have, probably still have, of a person in charge of maintenance of town buildings. Is that position currently filled? I ask only because between the fire station and the three schools, we have a collection of four buildings that are in need of massive maintenance. And I just wanted to know what the status is of that position.
Going to call Melissa Origi, our town manager. Good evening.
Good evening. That position, Mr. Cirque, is filled right now. We've had an individual in that job now for, I would say, a little over a year. So has an assistant. And if you watch a recent Select Board meeting, and I can send you the date, you'll have an opportunity to see him give the board an update.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's Richard Cirque, Precinct 2. Question, Article 5. Article 7, again, David Gould, the Director of Environment and Marine, is available to answer questions. Town meeting members. We're now going to move on to Article 8. And Mr. Canty moves the town appropriate the sum of $11,600,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of roof replacements at three Plymouth Public Schools. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 8. These roofs here are over three decades old, have sections that are beyond repair, and need to be replaced to ensure the integrity of the building interior. It is important to note that though the town must borrow the full $11,600,000 for this project, the school has received approval by the Massachusetts School Building Authority for reimbursement of 50.58% of these projects upon completion, which will substantially reduce the actual cost to the town.
This is a 2/3 vote. The Superintendent Schools will be available to answer questions. He's actually one of the panelists this evening, and that's Dr. Christopher Campbell. In addition, the school business manager, Brad Crothers. And also Christina Renaud, who is the Director of Facilities for the Plymouth Public Schools. They are all available to answer your questions in connection with Article 8. And at this time, we're going to move on to Article, and also, I see Brad Crothers is with us as well. And now, we're going to move on to Article 9A. And Mr. Canty moves that the town rescind the vote taken under Article 16B. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 14 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9A. Approval of this article will rescind the vote taken under Article 16B of the April 2021 Town Meeting regarding borrowing for the National Memorial Pilgrim Meeting House. The original plan for how to structure that borrowing has changed, and the new plan will be more favorable to the town. Following article deals, the following article after this article deals with how to pay for the new approach being sought.
Thank you, Kevin Canty. It's a majority vote. And also, Lynn Barrett is available to answer questions under Article 9A. We have other motions under Article 9. Next, Article 9B. Mr. Canty moves the town appropriate the sum of $806,936 from Article 16F of the April 2021 Town Meeting. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 14 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9B. Approval of this article will amend Article 16F of the April 2021 Town Meeting to increase the debt service budget by $806,936 to pay the principal and interest on the note involved in the previous article that we just dealt with. The funding sources for the increase are $151,046 from historic reserves and $655,890 of the fiscal year 2022 estimated CPA revenues to be added to the budgeted reserve.
This is a majority vote. Again, Lynn Barrett is available to answer questions. We're going to move on to Article 10. And Mr. Canty moves the town authorize the Select Board to accept temporary and permanent easements for access construction, sewer drainage utility purposes. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 10. Town meeting approval of the easements outlined in this article would enable the Department of Marine and Environmental Affairs to continue working with the consulting engineer, town council, and the adjacent property owners to complete the necessary formal survey, easement language, and recording at the Registry of Deeds prior to the onset of construction activities relative to the repairs to the Jenny Pond Dam and the installation of a new sewer main.
V-Voter, if Mr. Cirque is back with a question. We can bring in Richard Cirque, Precinct 2. And this is a majority vote. And David Gould is the Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. This is the town meeting preview. It's coming to you live on October 7. It is an overview of the motions coming before town meeting, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 16. And we are going through the warrant chronologically. We will begin. Richard Cirque has now joined us once again. Mr. Cirque, your question.
Yes, I just have a suggestion on this article and on the next for persons who may not be familiar with the actual location of the property involved in each article, if in the future, the assessor's map that shows the lot in question be included in the Advisory and Finance Committee materials.
Thank you. We have the Chair participating in this, and I think so noted. Thank you, Richard Cirque, Precinct 2. Moving on, Article 11. Mr. Canty moves the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept permanent easements for access. And this is going to be for properties located off Herring Pond Road. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 13 to 0 with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 11. Town meeting approval of the easement outlined in this article will allow for the town and the public will allow for the town and the public to gain legal access to the Cedarville Cemetery.
Thank you. And Jonathan Beener, Director of Department of Works, available to answer your questions. This will be a majority vote. And as we move on in the warrant, the next article coming before us will be Article Twelve. Article Twelve, Mr. Canty moves town vote to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twelve. These projects have either come in under budget, had their original scope change in a way that did not require the use of the full amount originally funded for them, or received some funding via a grant so as to reduce the town's share. And as such, the unused borrowing authority is no longer needed and should therefore be rescinded as a housekeeping measure.
It's a majority vote. Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer your questions. Article Thirteen is withdrawn. Article Fourteen, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend the general bylaws, Chapter One Forty-three, Departmental Revolving Funds. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Fourteen. Approval of this article will formalize the town's current policy for receipts credited to the Plymouth Beach Revolving Fund.
Thank you. And again, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer questions. Also David Gould, the Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. And we move on. Article Fifteen, where Mr. Canty moves the town vote to accept the last paragraph of General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, and dedicate a hundred percent of the extended maintenance fee. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Fifteen. Approval of this article will allow the town to earmark the fees collected when recently paved roads, as in within the last five years, are cut into so that the fees can go directly into the pavement management stabilization fund.
Majority vote. And again, Lynn Barrett and Jonathan Beeter are available to answer questions from town meeting. And at this time, we continue on with the warrant, moving to Article Sixteen. Mr. Canty moves the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E one-half, to establish a new revolving fund to be known as the Little Red Schoolhouse Revolving Fund. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of fourteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Sixteen. Approval of this article will establish a revolving fund to deposit fees collected from the rental of the Little Red Schoolhouse to various groups and establish a thirty thousand dollar spending limit for the fund for fiscal year 2022.
Melissa Origi, our town manager, is available to answer questions. Majority vote. Article Seventeen, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to authorize select board and Board of Assessors pursuant to provisions of the General Laws to enter an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes. Mr. Canty.
In a vote of thirteen to one with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Seventeen. Approval of this payment in lieu of taxes agreement will be for personal property tax associated with a ground-mounted solar farm development located off Black and Water Course Roads, shown as lots thirty-five D, forty-three dash one, and forty-three A on Assessors Map Ninety. The farm is located on approximately eleven point two seven six acres and can produce up to ninety, nine hundred and ninety-nine point six kilowatts. The terms of this agreement would be twenty thousand dollars per megawatt of direct current with an escalation of two point five percent per year for twenty years. These terms are similar to the terms in our other solar pilot agreements throughout town.
Thank you, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer questions. It's a majority vote. Article Eighteen is withdrawn. Article Nineteen, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to accept General Laws that authorize select board to establish senior citizen property tax workoff. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Nineteen. Approval of this article will update the town's existing senior tax workoff abatement program to comply with new state guidelines on said program and also create a tax workoff abatement program for veterans in town.
Lynn Barrett is available to answer questions. Article Twenty, before we move to Article Twenty, we're going to go to Precinct Eight, Dawn Williams. Dawn Williams has notified through the V voter platform that he wishes to speak and ask a question. Town meeting members have the ability to do that this evening and at town meeting. It is part of the remote participation that we have for town meeting. So we're bringing in Precinct Eight, Donald Williams, once again, who is going to be speaking at this town meeting preview that's coming to you live on October seventh. Mr. Williams is now with us, and we're looking to, he's unmuted. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a simple question. I'm wondering what kind of tasks are available for senior citizens to do?
Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance.
So Dawn, we have a program similar to this right now. We're just adopting the new guidelines from the state for this program. But there's all kinds of tasks. All different departments are asked if they have any, you know, need for someone, a little extra help. We've had people work in animal control. We've had people work in the finance department, like doing filing or things like that. So it's really all over the place, the types of tasks and things that some of the seniors can do.
Thank you, Lynn.
Precinct Two, Richard Cirque. Again, this is coming to you live on Thursday, October seventh. And the town meeting members who are participating in the live cable cast are also able to use the V voter platform to ask questions. And we're bringing back in Richard Cirque, Precinct Two. And this is your town meeting preview, coming to you live from PAC TV Studios for Collins Ave in Plymouth. The town meeting is going to be on Saturday, October sixteen at eight AM. Town meeting members have the chance to vote as to whether to participate remotely. Mr. Cirque is with us. Richard, continue.
Yes. Ms. Barrett, could you tell me whether or not there are limits under the governing statutes as to how much a senior or a veteran can reduce his tax bill by?
Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance.
In the documentation that we provided to town meeting members in your book, they can earn up to fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay. I only had page two thirteen in my book, but maybe, maybe it's elsewhere.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to Article Twenty that's been withdrawn. Article Twenty-one, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to accept the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Twenty-second H. And it has to do with an act related relative to veterans' benefits. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-one. Approval of this article will accept provisions of the Brave Act, which provide a property tax exemption for the surviving parents or guardians of all armed services and National Guard veterans who lost their lives as a result of active duty servant pursuant to the eligibility requirements detailed herein.
And this is a majority vote. Roxanne Whitbeck, the Director of Veterans Services, available to answer questions along with Lynn Barrett. And we're going to go to Precinct Eight, Geraldine Williams, who has requested access to speak at this preview. We're going to bring her in because she is participating in the live cable cast on Thursday, October seven, which is coming to you live from PAC TV Studios. And Geraldine has now joined us. She'll be unmuted. She is. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I pressed it too soon. I really want to speak on the next motion.
All right, well, why don't you stay with us since we have you here? And we'll move on to the next motion. I'm not seeing any of the speakers. Article Twenty-two, Mr. Canty moves authorize select board for special legislation. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of fourteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-two. Approval of this article will increase the minimum age for original appointment to the position of police officer in the town of Plymouth to age forty.
Thank you, and that is going to be a majority vote. Dana Flynn is the Acting Chief of Police, available to answer questions. And now we'll go to Geraldine Williams.
Hello. My concern is that we are raising the age from thirty-two to forty-two, forty, for eligible police officers to start. And I am concerned that this, by raising the age that much, that we may get more sick days and also injuries with older police officers. And I'm just curious why we are making such a big increase. I would suggest that we only, and I was thinking of making an amendment, and I don't know if this is possible, to make it only to thirty-six so that we split the difference.
Thank you. So again, tonight, we're not debating or deliberating the articles, but I listened to what you said. I think there was one question there that we could answer, which is why are we doing this? And with respect to your second comment about making a motion, please email to me any motion that you may wish to make, and I will consider it. But again, this is already special legislation. I'll have to look at the text of your proposed motion. But we're going to go to Melissa Origi, who is with us. She's the town manager, responding to the question from Geraldine Williams.
Thank you very much. Ms. Williams, we are having a real problem with recruiting for police positions right now, not just here in Plymouth, but really state and nationwide. And we've seen, or our police chief has heard that this is working to some degree in other communities. So we thought that we would try it. We're also interested in having these police officers because they are older. They're a little, they're more mature, more experienced with different things that happen in life. And we think with all the attention on police right now, that might be a settling presence. And those are the reasons, as we debated if this is something we should do in Plymouth, that we're bringing it forward.
Thank you. Geraldine Williams, any other questions? I don't see her on the screen at this point. We're going to go to Precinct Six, William Arienti. Mr. Arienti is going to, we're going to bring him in. We have been moving through the warrant, and we're up to Article Twenty-two in our town meeting preview. I see Mr. Arienti on the screen. We'll unmute him. And this is coming to you live, and he's with us. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have one question about this. Currently, there is a law around the books which allows someone who was, who had spent time in the armed services, to exempt those years in the armed services as well. So someone who is getting on the job at forty years of age could exempt three more years or four more years of service time that they did. And now that becomes forty, could become forty-four years of age rather than forty years of age. I don't know if anyone looked into that, or if that's an issue that was brought up.
Again, Melissa Origi, town manager, responding to a question from a town meeting member.
It's actually a really good point. And I don't recall in any of my conversations with Chief Flynn that we talked about that that would actually raise the age even higher for somebody that had that veteran's exemption. So we'll get some information on that together, talk about it a little bit, and have something to get back to all of you about.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving on into the warrant, Article Twenty-three. Mr. Canty moves town vote to accept provisions of General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section AE, which provides for a youth commission. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-three. Approval of this article will provide an opportunity for the youth of the community to get involved in town government and give them a channel through which to advocate for themselves and the issues important to their demographic in our community.
Thank you, Kevin Canty. At town meeting, we understand that Patrick Flaherty, who was a member of the select board, would be speaking to this article. We're going to continue on. Article Twenty-four is withdrawn. Article Twenty-five, Mr. Canty moves the town vote to amend a general bylaw by deleting indecent language and indecent marks. Mr. Canty.
In a vote of thirteen to one with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-five. Approval of this article will amend the Town of Plymouth general bylaws consistent with the recommendations of Town Council by deleting sections dealing with indecent language and indecent marks. These sections are outdated, vague, and essentially unenforceable as written. And retaining them may open the town up to costly legal challenges. State law will still provide protection against and enforceable penalties for the misconduct outlined in the sections being targeted for deletion.
Thank you. And Lee Hartman is the Director of Planning and Development. He's one of our panelists this evening, and he's available to answer questions on this. It is a majority vote. Article Twenty-six is withdrawn. Article Twenty-seven, Mr. Canty moves that town vote to accept provisions of General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Eight L Municipal Agricultural Commission. Mr. Canty.
In a vote of twelve to two with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-seven. Approval of this article will adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Eight L, and transition the Plymouth Agricultural Committee to an agricultural commission for the purpose of promoting, developing, and monitoring the agricultural resources of the town.
And at town meeting, Patrick Farah will be available. He's the planning technician. It's a majority vote. Moving on to Article Twenty-eight, Mr. Canty moves town vote to transfer care, custody, and control. And you have the information off of Center Hill Road. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of fourteen to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-eight. Approval of this article will transfer the listed parcels from the town treasurer to the Conservation Commission for protection under Article Ninety-seven of the Massachusetts State Constitution. Both parcels were taken by the town through a tax lien proceeding in the mid nineteen nineties. The parcels comprise approximately five acres of unbuildable land located off of Center Hill Road.
Thank you. Again, Patrick Farah, the planning technician available. This is going to be a two-thirds vote at town meeting. And we'll continue on. Article Twenty-nine, Mr. Canty moves town vote to amend the zoning bylaw. And this has to do with accessory dwelling units. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of twelve to zero with no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Twenty-nine. Approval of this article will amend the zoning bylaw to allow accessory dwelling units by special permit. This is intended to increase the number of moderately priced, long-term rental units in the town and to allow residents on fixed incomes who wish to remain in their homes to supplement their income through the rental of just such a unit.
We're going to go to Precinct Twelve. We're going to bring in Betsy Hall. While we bring in Betsy Hall, this is a two-thirds vote. Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development, available to answer questions. And also Brigida Keen. She is the Vice Chair of the Town of Plymouth Planning Board. This is coming to you live on Thursday, October seven. And we have the ability for town meeting members to come in and ask questions. Betsy Hall is now on the screen. She'll be unmuted. And we're going to welcome back Betsy Hall, who wishes to speak. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Betsy Hall from Precinct Twelve. I'm very pleased that this plan, that the plan void brought back this article with special permit. However, I noticed, I've been looking at the bylaws of other towns, that there are a number of provisions that other towns on the Cape and in the Boston area have included in their ADU bylaws. So I will be bringing some amendments to town meeting. I haven't got them all written yet, but I'll be bringing some amendments to reflect some of the concerns of other communities. But on the, on the other hand, I would like to ask if it would be possible or how I would go about requesting that a bylaw review committee, such as we had for the sand and gravel bylaw, how would that be convened? Who would approve it and who would appoint it? So that we can sit down, perhaps a group of people, and really look at what's appropriate for our town. Because I noticed that all, even though it's Cape Cod, and you would think they would all be quite similar, there are some significant differences from town to town and also too in the Boston area. So I'm wondering how such a committee might be appointed and be able to sit down and really wrestle with some of the... wrestle with some of the concerns that have been raised in other communities and addressed through their bylaw.
Betsy Hall, first, with respect to any motions you may make, I would request that they be forwarded to me as soon as possible, since we're about a week away from Town Meeting, and we'll need time, particularly where we're dealing with a zoning bylaw, to determine whether or not it's appropriate to receive them. With respect to the second question, the Town of Plymouth has had a bylaw review committee in the past. However, I think what you're asking is a zoning bylaw review committee. This came from the Planning Board. And tonight, we have the Director of Planning Development, Lee Hartman, on the panel. Lee, do you have anything else that you might add as a comment to Betsy Hall's question?
Sure. Thank you. Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development for the town. So if this article doesn't pass at Town Meeting, then that would be the recommendation to the Planning Board. It would be up to them to decide if they wanted to do that or move forward with some other option. But again, I think if it doesn't pass at this Town Meeting, that would be one of the things the Board would talk about, and it would be the Planning Board's decision whether they wanted to create that type of committee or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy, any other questions?
No, thank you very much, Lee.
Thank you, Betsy Hall, Precinct 12. We're now moving to Precinct 8, Donald Williams. Again, this is coming to you live on Thursday, October 7. And those Town Meeting members who are participating in the live presentation are able to ask questions. We see Mr. Williams back on the screen. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Quick question. I'm wondering, Lee, if this has any effect on our status for affordable housing with the state? If so, how much? I'm in favor of this, by the way, majorly in favor, but I'm curious as to whether we get that benefit also.
Lee Hartman, Director of Planning Development, responding.
Thank you. Unfortunately, it will not. To be able to qualify, there'd be two things that have to happen. One is it'd have to be a permanent deed restriction on the property that makes it affordable. In a case of Plymouth, it would be in perpetuity. And the second thing is to make it count. You would have to go through a lottery, so you couldn't pick who your tenant would be. So for example, if you created one of these, you wanted to have it available for your son or your daughter. If we wanted to count it towards our affordable units, you would have to go through a lottery, and you'd have to be, pick the person who was successful in the lottery, not the person you want. So unfortunately, for those reasons, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to be able to try to count these as part of our affordable unit.
Okay. Thanks, Lee.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
And moving on, the next item is Article 30. As of the time of this Town Meeting Preview on October 7, I do not have a motion. If there is no motion at Town Meeting, there will be no action. And at this time, I'd like to, once again, welcome back Nicole Manfredi, the Assistant Town Moderator. And Nicole has been monitoring the chat throughout the evening, and I'd like to just hear, as we close, Nicole's observations. Nicole?
So I would, I just want to thank everyone for monitoring that chat. It really allows me to problem-solve tech issues. So continue with that, and then, as well as Town Meeting on the 16th. I also wanted to note that I have two more folks that requested to participate in Town Meeting from Plymouth North High School on the 16th. So I have a total of four people. If you feel that you'll, you would benefit from the tech support, please let me know by tomorrow. I just want to be sure that we provide an adequate number of tech buddies.
Thank you, Nicole Manfredi, Assistant Town Moderator. At this time, we're going to go to another vote. We're supported by Kristy Kinney from OTI Technologies. It is a motion to adjourn, and the time will come up on the screen. Town Meeting members will have an opportunity to cast a vote as to whether to adjourn. We see the 30 on the screen. Voting ends in 30 seconds. We start voting now. Town Meeting members, if you can vote on a motion to adjourn the Town Meeting Preview. Town Meeting members will be doing this throughout Town Meeting on all main motions, all substantive motions. I'm fixing my microphone as we're done. Sorry. We're counting down. We're down to no more seconds, so we're now going to see the vote. And polling is closed. 33 said yes, 0 said no, zero abstention. The other night, we had someone who didn't want to adjourn. We're going to go through the precincts. You get to see how your Town Meeting member voted. You all get to see whether or not your vote was recorded. We're in the first three precincts. We'd like to thank everyone for their participation this evening. Thank you to PAC TV, Julie Thompson, who's here with us, also looks like Dustin Fleming in the control room, and Mark McKinley, also in the control room.
Dave Antoine.
Dave Antoine, okay. Dave Antoine's in the control room. We're scrolling through the precincts. They're waving. Of course, thank you to Nicole, who's here with us. Thank you to Kristy Kinney, who is working remotely with us. And we are completing all the precincts now with 13, 14, and 15. Again, Town Meeting members, if you have motions, please contact me as soon as possible. I'm Steve Trifletti, Plymouth Town Moderator. Thank you for joining us, and good night.